We verify that we're uh that we're up and live.
You can see. Okay.
Everybody's quiet now?
I'm just trying to make sure we're on, we're on, we're live on TV.
Probably not a bad idea for us all to go on mute unless we want to speak about something. So background viewers goes out. Alright, looks like we're on, okay. Now let me mute the TV. Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Welcome to Lundary Town Council meeting for May 4th, 2020. Hi, John Farrell, Chairman of the Town Council, call the meeting to order. Could you, town councilors, can you please announce if you are present and if there's anyone in the room with you?
Oh, Green, I'm present, no one else in the room.
Tom Dolan, I'm present, no one else in the room.
Jim Butler, I'm president, no one else in the room.
Deb Paul, I'm present, no one else in the room.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. If we can start off, Lisa, if you could start off reading our, our online statement, please.
Sure. On behalf of Chair of the Town Council, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with Governor Sununu Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Town Council is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is, this is to confirm that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom webinar platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Council have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number, And when prompted, enter code 831-4748-1446 and password 657930. You may also watch this meeting on LACTV22, or by going to the Zoom website and entering the same codes provided for the telephone dialing. We have previously given public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call 603-432-1100, extension 120, or email kbrown@lundondarynh.org, and adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. That's it.
Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, um, we are now entering into a public, excuse me. I think what I'm gonna do is I'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance at this time. So if we have the flag. Kevin, flag up? Kevin, flag up?
Flags up.
Yeah.
Flags up, there it is. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So this evening, folks, we have no public, we have no public hearings. We have old business, which are finalizing the council goals. As a reminder, I'll read what, what was discussed. One, coffee with a counselor once a month and see if the school board member can join us. Water and air quality plan. Continue the economic development plan. And revenue breakthrough and financial analysis presentation. That would probably all happen at the same time as the budget presentation. So do I have any questions or comments with regards to the council goals? Obviously, we'll have to build a plan out behind these, but this is our starting point. Any questions? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll accept these as, I need to, I'll take silence as acceptance, and we'll move forward with the council goals for 2020 as previously stated. And that takes care of old business if there's no questions. Okay. Onto new business. We have one item tonight. Counselor Paul would like to address the council with a discussion of a presentation by the auditors. So Deb, it's over to you.
Um, thank you, John. First and foremost, I misspoke last meeting when I said forensic audit. That was the wrong terminology, and I own that, and I apologize for that. What I'm looking to do is get a better scope of what the auditors are doing. So I would like to look at this scope of what they do prior to the actual audit, so that maybe we can, for people like myself and maybe some of the new budget committee members, it could be very beneficial to understand what they go in and look at prior to, to see if there is any in the, in the processes, to see if there are any overlapping areas in the process in which we might be able to save a few dollars here and there. So that's kinda what I'm thinking about. I just, I just think that, you know, for example, if there are seven steps in the purchasing procedure, which is something we're supposed to be looking at soon in that policy, the auditing company could tell us what they look at when they look at the budget and look at the purchasing plan, and maybe even come up to come up with some ideas of the best policies to use in creating a purchasing plan. So I think that educational wise, it would be a benefit to look at these things prior to, as opposed to after, because then we would have to wait a whole nother year before we could even make any adjustments or rethink things. So I'm hoping that they would, if since they might have even started, I don't even know, did they start the pre-audit yet? If they're coming up and looking at things, I mean, it doesn't have to be a formal presentation. It can just be a Q and A that somebody could do while they're already up here, and hopefully that would be no cost to the taxpayer.
So has Kevin or Justin, have they started their process?
They have. Justin, you want to just speak briefly to what they've, the preliminary work they've begun?
Absolutely. So with the preliminary work, what they will do is they'll take a look at our financial statements at their current state, and they will pick several individuals pays, as well as several vendor invoices, and they'll follow the steps through. This is called the internal controls process, they do a walkthrough of it. And from there, they determine how the town is doing in terms of their policy in what's best suited for the GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles. They started this the Monday of the last meeting, actually.
Okay. So it's like a basic financial audit, correct? And it's kind of random, or do you know in advance which departments or which ledgers they're gonna be looking at?
So they will get all the ledgers, or we send them all the ledgers, is a better way to put it. As for what they look at, we send them check one from July 1st through whatever the last check, or in this case, because we use credit card temporarily, credit card transaction, through the last, whenever they decide for the preliminary, they pick a couple, I think it was 20 this year. Don't, I'm not 100% sure on the amount, but they pick between 10 and 20 randomly, follow those through, and then decide. And then look at those and determine how we're doing.
So they look at the process. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, that goes for the same as payroll. They do that with payroll as well.
Okay. So I guess what I'm looking for is they come in and they just kind of look at the bottom half, not necessarily the top half. For example, if there are seven steps in purchasing policy, do they look at all seven steps? Or do they just look at, this is what came in, you know, only pieces of it, not the whole thing? Do you know what I'm saying?
I don't, I don't. With the walk through analysis, they essentially, I mean, they essentially try to do a walkthrough of, alright, this is what happened, this was the step they took, this is it, this is that, all the way through, to ensure that we followed.
And do they give you criticism about them? As you, they're telling you, perhaps do they say this could be better, that could be better, this is duplicated? If we get rid of that duplication, we may have any area to save some time and to save some money?
Deb, one, Justin, again, Justin can speak to this more in depth, but one of the things we get along with the audit each year is something called a management letter. And that management letter will tell us, will tell everybody where our weak spots are in our financial process. Paul, you know, different policies we should have as a town, internal controls that need to be tightened up. And one of the things that the council, in particular, John and Tom Frida, when he was on the council, would go at every year is wanting to know how the town did on the previous year's management comments as far as whether or not we listened to the guidance of the auditors and tightened up those areas where they said we had weaknesses. Justin, I don't know if you want to expound upon any of that?
Nope, that's, that's a pretty accurate statement. I mean, throughout the audit, they will also say, you know, this, this, they'll give us ideas that maybe not reach the level of the management letter, but will allow us to fix them within and make, essentially, make it the best we can do.
But Deb, one thing they won't do for us, because it's really left up to the council and the administration to do is, when you said like, look, look for things that are either duplicative or places to save money, that's not really something the auditors would look for. Instead, they leave that up to the budget process that we go through every year to, you know, to look at those areas if that's something that we all choose to do.
So what that would be would be an efficiency audit, and I, I don't know the cost off the top of my head of what that would be, but it would be a good amount. I could ask the auditors how much they believe it would be if you'd like.
So Justin, why don't, why don't we take a step back here? Why don't, why don't we start from, why don't we start from the last management letter that we had, not tonight, why don't we start from the last management letter that we had, the last set of results we had? Why don't we just go through and review those prior to the next audit coming up? And, you know, take a look at that, see where we're at. In addition to that, I know you're working on a new purchasing policy, is that correct?
That is correct.
Alright, so that might be two good places to start and everything. Deb, if it's okay, I'm gonna throw it out to the rest of the councilors and see what they have to say.
John, I do agree with you, and that was what I was gonna say, is that it would be good if we could start looking at the answer that they gave us last year, to see what we could implement this year to help move the audit differently and maybe look at the scope of it, I think that's a good idea. And I, and Kevin, I do understand that they can't really give us advice on that, but they can say, they can make suggestions and, and basically give us some ideas of what other people do, other governments for their purchasing policies that maybe work, or things we may even, never even thought of thinking of. So that, I always just think vetting everything fully, and, and I think that this would help too, the budget committee, since there are a lot of new members there that may not understand a lot of this like myself.
Any of the other councilors, any comments?
Yeah, John, I think I had my, my electronic hand up.
I'm sorry, I'm just seeing it now, thank you.
This is, uh, the one thing that I thi, I think I know what Deb's after, and I think it's, uh, it's, it's a good, a good thought to better understand what the auditors are doing. But I might off, offer a word of caution that these audits, we do want to maintain a, a degree of independence for the auditors. We want to make sure that, that we don't, interfere is a strong word, but we don't influence the auditors to, you know, to, to coach them to look at certain aspects of what we do, or coach them to avoid certain aspects that we do. We don't want to be in a position where, where we are, can be accused of that. We want to kind of step back and let them, let them look at what they, what they want to look at to verify that we're meeting the standards that they measure us against, as, as well as complying with their own internal policy. So, but, so while I think the Deb's idea is, is a laudable idea, I just, as a word of caution, we want to make sure we don't interfere with the independence of the audit.
I would just echo that this is a really reputable auditing company, and I highly doubt that they would allow or even let us influence them in any way, shape, or form. I think that they just want to help government, town governments, from what I read on their website and briefly talked with someone there about. They seem to, to really, really want to help be, have governments be the best that they can be and do a really good job. And I, I think that they're really good, and I, I don't think that anything like that's gonna happen, but I agree. We'll keep our eyes open.
Hey, John?
Yes, Jim?
Hey, Deb, have you read what, any of the past audits?
I have.
Yeah.
Justin sent me the last two years, and there were a couple things I saw in there that, you know, I would like to be able to ask them some questions about personally. And, and it's just a matter of understanding their processes of thinking. But I, I can't do that, because they have a private, you know, I can't, I can ask a general question, how do you work? But I can't ask any details about a private audit. So that's why I wanted to understand it, Jim. I, I just really think that, I think if people had a better understanding, as Kevin was very gracious to explain a few things to me, and I appreciated it immensely, because then I was able to explain it to a few other people that had a misunderstanding. And I think that by having them there and doing this prior to, it gives more validity to the public that we're trying to be as transparent as possible, we're trying to be as efficient as possible, and we're trying to do the best to save them money. And I think that that is really good to do it prior, because after, you know, we get the thing, and oh, we did really well, we rate you an A+, and that's great, but nobody sees what happens after. And this way, if they see it before and they say, oh, you went from an A to an A+, that kind of makes people feel warm and fuzzy. And that was kind of what I was going for.
Now, Justin, it's my understanding that the audit is already underway? They started their preliminary audit two weeks ago, that, yes. Okay. Well, John, I, I think I understand where Deb's coming from. The audit's already started. What I would suggest is that when the accounting company presents the report to the council, is that probably would be a good time to have a set of questions to ask them. And since the audit's basically underway, I wouldn't want to interfere with anything that they're doing at this point. I think that that time has, has passed. And like I said, when they come in and give us the review, which they do every year, is that, you know, Deb, by all means, have a set of questions, and at that time, you know, let's see if we can get some clear understanding for you.
So Joe, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think it's a good idea that Deb got some of the past audits, because when you comb through those audits, you can kind of get a feel for what they're trying to get at a lot of times. And I think that coming back with questions, either whether it be with Justin or Kevin, really helped teach to what Counselor Dolan said before. I think it's, you know, having a new counselor in it and being aware of how the process goes. Sometimes, you know, you're, you're here and you go through it for nine, 10, 11, 12 years, and we take it for granted that it's clear, we think it's clear, and it may not be out there for everybody, so. You know, as, as we're following this process now, I think we, we may uncover some questions that may get some, some answers to the public, so I think it's all good the way we're, we're following it.
Alright, so let me see if I can come to some sort of middle ground. Perhaps if we could take the, Justin, if perhaps we could take the last two management letters. We hired you away from one of these firms, didn't we?
Not the one that we currently have, but we had the previous firm back in 2015. And you hired me away from them, yes. Which is why it's part of the reason why they had stepped down from being our auditors, because the independency was in question.
So perhaps what we could do is start with the last two management letters, and maybe we could put an agenda item for the next council meeting for you to walk through the last two management letters and explain the steps we took coming out of them. And, and then we could revisit this and go from there, if that's a good compromise for everybody.
Can I add one more thing to that?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, okay. If, if, if Justin could kind of give a, an example, as they come in, they ask for this, this is how they, they don't have to give numbers, you don't have to, but kind of explain their process and how they get and how they go through stuff, so that we can see, okay, they come in, the, 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 the people give them this, then they do this. I, I guess I really want to understand how they get to the results in that letter, is what I would like to see. The flow of how they get there, not influence it, not change it, but have a better understanding of it, of how they go through things. And I think that understanding that will help when we're putting together different policies in the future.
Okay, well, let's start with the two management letters. I mean, what I should probably say is
I just wanted to put that up, that's all.
I'm, I'm not saying not to do it. What, what you may find interesting is to go back to the, the meetings that Tom Frida was a member of the council, and the way that he questioned the auditors may, may actually answer some of your questions, because it was, we would get into quite the conversations about how they did things. But, um, you know, it's, it's a good point. Um, let's start with the management letters, if everybody's okay with that, and see where that takes us, and then perhaps go from there. And, and Justin, I would suggest that you do the, do the management letters with some editorial overview while you're doing them at the same time, saying, okay, we learned this, this is how we learned it, these are the steps we took.
Okay.
Absolutely. So
Let's, let's start, let's at least start there.
So while I have it, I just want to inform the public that from, I believe, 2003 forward, the audited financials are available online. And they were a little difficult to find throughout the finance department, but we have now added them to the town doc, documents, financial documents in the town documents, part of the website.
Yes, thank you, they're easier to find.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Is, um, is everybody, is everybody good with that as a next step? And I, I just, you know, I don't need a consensus, it's just if you're not, tell me you're not good with it. Okay. Alright, so next item I have on the agenda for this evening is the, before I go to the approval of minutes, I just, I mean, I've been watching the screen, I, you know, and I know this is hard to do during this meeting. I want to make sure there's nobody from the public that has been denied access or needs to make public comment in any way, or anyone who wants to have anything to say to the council. Just double checking, I don't see anyone in the participants list that has dialed in. I don't, Lisa, has anyone contacted you?
No, John, I've been watching it, no one has chimed in as attendee, nor have I been contacted by anyone. Kirby, has anyone let you know?
I haven't heard anything.
Can we
You're on TV, if you're on TV and you need to contact us, please do.
John?
Go ahead, Kevin.
You want to, you want to maybe give out the phone number, just in case, for some reason, if someone doesn't know the number to call into?
I can read it again, hold on one second.
I've been just told that the teleca, the television broadcast is really screwed up.
So interestingly, I'm looking at it right now, and it looks pretty clear. I don't have the volume on.
Alright.
My, my wife, who's in another room, saying it's, it's very, it's jumping all over the place. She said she's, she's been having a hard time watching it.
So what's interesting is, is I have it on right behind me. You can actually, I can actually show it to you right there. Turn the volume up on it.
What'd you say?
It just cleared up this second.
Yeah.
And it's back.
Okay, and I just heard Deb say that.
So let me repeat the number, if anyone would like to call in. It's 1312-626-7, sorry, let me start that again. Then you'll have to enter two codes. The first is 831-4748-1446, and then the password is 657930.
Okay, so let's give it a minute here, I want to make sure people have the opportunity to respond if they, if they would like to. I don't want to deny anybody that opportunity. Alright, let's keep watching for that, I'm gonna move to approval of minutes. So I'm asking for approval of the April 20th, 2020 Town Council minutes. I need a motion to approve as presented in our packet. Yes?
Yeah, this is, oh, Green, and it says, it says that I was on the phone, but I was on video during that time.
Okay. Yeah, something's happening right now on my screen that's going crazy.
I'm recording this, so if need be, Drew will be able to rebroadcast it by accessing the recording.
Okay, um, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes for April 20th, 2020. I can't, I cannot hear you. Now I can hear you.
You can hear me now?
I can.
Okay, I'm saying the minutes are incorrect on the, and on the telephone. Does that make sense?
The telephone does not work correctly?
Right, it says, it says that I was on the telephone, I was actually on the video.
Alright, why have you in my participants list? And I have you
He's referring to the minutes. He wants the minutes changed.
Okay, so I need, I'll accept the motion with the Okay, so I need, I'll accept a motion with the amended minutes, saying that Joe was on the telephone, yet he was on the video. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes with that amendment? I have a motion from Mr. Butler, was that?
On the video.
No.
Mr. Dolan, Mr. Dolan has made a motion to approve as amended by Joe Green. Do I have a second?
Second, Jim Butler.
Jim Butler's second. I need a roll call vote. I, John Farrell, approve the minutes.
I, Jim Butler, approve the minutes.
I, Tom.
I, Deb Paul, approve the minute.
All right, got all that, Joe? I'm waiting to hear from you. And I can't hear Joe, so I'll take an approval of minutes of 4-0. The next piece I have is a resignation of Dan Turcot from the Traffic Safety Committee. You find his letter? Yes, Mr. Ramsey sent along Dan Turcot's letter. And he has asked to resign from the committee. Do I have a motion to accept Dan Turcot's resignation, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we'll be accepting Turcot's resignation.
So I have Jim Butler with a motion. Second from Tom Dolan. Roll call vote, I, John Farrell, accept his resignation. I vote aye.
I, Deb Paul, accept his resignation.
I, Tom Dolan.
Go ahead, Tom.
I, Tom Dolan.
Jim Butler, please.
I, Jim Butler.
Joe Green, can you hear me?
Green.
And Joe accepts it. Thank you, Joe. Okay, next item I have for this evening is, is I have, first of all, Mr. Turcot, thank you for your service, and we'll be sending along some of our appreciation for your service. Do I have any liaison reports? New liaison report.
I actually went to, I had, well, I didn't go to, I listened in on the conservation, and they've got some good things coming up. They're going to be coming to the town council with people donating some land and some projects with the new formed garden group in town. So it was a very exciting meeting, and that's about it.
That's terrific, thank you. Anyone else liaison reports? I'm not seeing anything further for liaison reports. Thank you, town manager report.
Thank you, John, and greetings from St. Susie here. Beautiful. I have a few items I want to update the council on this evening before I get to the issue on the abatement of tax interest. The first thing is, just start off with a quick budget report, as we're looking at these every week. Things are in pretty good shape right now from where we were last week. On the revenue side, we should be at about 83.6% at this point in the year. And we're right around, excuse me, that's on the, sure, look at the right one. Yeah, on the revenue side, we should be at 83.6%. We're at about 85.88%. So we're a little ahead of the game still in revenue, and that has ticked up from where we were last week. One of the biggest items that came in was our highway block grant monies, which was the final payment for this fiscal year. So the good news is, for this fiscal year, we have received all of our highway block grant monies from the state, and we've also received all of our rent, meals and rooms tax revenue. Some of the other areas we're closely watching, the motor vehicle permits, those are about at 88% right now. So they're trending at about 5% higher than where we should be, that's a good thing. Hertz Rent-A-Car is a big one that usually comes in in May. They do all their renewals in May. And so we'll have a much better idea on where we are in June, depending on whether or not, or how many renewals they have this month. Same thing with building permits. We're trending a little lower, about 2%, 1% lower than where we should be. But again, it's still a strong, healthy number right now. And the only other area where we're lagging behind a little bit is in the cable department. We're still waiting on some payments, it looks like, from Comcast. I don't anticipate we won't get those. But otherwise, revenue is in fairly good shape right at this moment, and obviously we'll be closely monitoring it over the next eight weeks. On the expenditure side, again, due to the budget freeze, we're in pretty good shape right now. As I mentioned before, we should be at about 83.6% of budget, and we're trending today on our operating budget at about 80.6%. So almost, almost 3% below, and that's a good place to be heading into June. One of the things we did find out today during the governor's press conference at 3 o'clock was that there's going to be some money coming to the towns from the CARES Act. For Londonderry specifically, our allocation is $614,000. Now, there's a lot of strings on this money, and by that I mean is we're not getting a check for that amount. Instead, we have to apply for it. And we apply for it through reimbursement of certain expenses. And not all expenses are qualifying for that money. So the way to look at it is, is we have, at least for this fiscal year, and actually through August, there's $614,000 from the CARES Act through the state that has been put aside for Londonderry that we can file for reimbursement of expenses up into that amount for qualifying expenses. We cannot use that money, though, to supplement any lost revenue. The other announcement the governor made today is that all of our fire and police personnel will be receiving a $300 a week stipend for the next eight weeks. So that's every certified firefighter, police officer in both those departments will be receiving that stipend that comes directly from the CARES Act and will be administered by the state of New Hampshire. Any questions on either of those items before?
Yeah, Kevin, I do.
Sure.
With regards to income of the cable Comcast, they're overdue?
Justin will answer that.
Okay, thank you.
No, they're not, they pay on a quarterly basis. So they, I believe, either pay middle of May or beginning of June.
Okay, beautiful, thank you.
Quick update on town hall operations. We continue to operate with the virtual town hall. There's still a lot of activity, as I've mentioned during all my reports, of things going on at town hall in every department. The virtual services have been working out very well. And so what we're doing here as we go forward, as you know, the governor's stay-at-home order has been extended through May 31st. Unlike businesses that have been closed or partially closed, we don't have a sense of urgency to reopen the building necessarily, because we've been operational all along. Obviously, employee and the public safety is of highest priority. And so we're looking at what services we can provide better during this time. And if need be, we're going to look at making some modifications potentially this month. But that being said, right now, the thought process is to largely continue operating the way we have been and evaluate as we get closer to the month of June. Lastly, on the issue of the abatement of tax interest, after a number of discussions with Attorney Ramsdale on this, we have figured out the best way to go forward on it, that is to comply and exercise our authority under the current statute, which means this. We're going to send the tax bills out like we normally would, that'll be due July 1st. If people are making late payments on their taxes, the interest will accrue on those payments until the taxes are paid in full. At such time, they apply for an abatement on the interest. And on the application itself, there's a box to check off where you can check off financial hardship and then put in your reason for that financial hardship. And then we can abate that interest after the taxes have been paid. What this does is, and again, that is the current law, and so we're complying with what the existing law does. It prevents us from having to put out a blanket waiver of interest on everyone's tax payment. And it also prevents us from having to put a ceiling or a cap on how many days we're going to allow it for. Instead, we're just going to do it the normal way we would do it and educate the public, remind the public on how they can ask for the abatement on the interest if they do have to pay their taxes late as a result of financial hardship due to COVID. And I say due to COVID, and frankly, could be due to anything. So, because that is the existing law. But Attorney Ramsdale, myself, and the finance director feel that that is the best way to proceed on that. The other thing I just want to mention on that point is that, under the governor's executive order on that issue, one of the things that is being delayed by the executive order is there will be no tax deedings during this time, during the length of the emergency order. So we will not be tax-deading anyone's properties during this period.
All set?
I got it.
I have something.
Go ahead, Jim. Joe, go ahead.
Yep, so Kevin, how is this actually going to be communicated to the public with the abatement? Are we going to put it on the internet, on our Facebook page, or on our website?
Yeah, the, well, it'll be on all of that. But Joe, the other thing we're going to do is, we're going to put something in the mailing itself, in the property tax mailing, that explains to people what the process is and how they can go about applying for the abatement on the interest.
Oh, in the taxes itself?
Correct.
Oh, great, excellent, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
John, I got a question.
Please proceed. Yes?
Hey, Kevin, this is Tom. Kevin, before you open the town hall back to normal business, are you considering any of those sneeze guards for where the public interacts with our clerks?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, Tom, because I want to give a very big compliment to Mr. Cotton, who is on this video with us, as well as the Public Works Department. Those Plexiglas barriers have been installed already in all of the various departments that interface with the public. So they are in the clerk's office, they're in the assessing department, the building, and the Public Works Department. So they are there, and I give big compliments to both of them because not only was it done very expeditiously, but we're now finding the back order on Plexiglas is something like six to eight weeks. So we literally, I think, got the last stock of them before they went on back order for quite a bit. And I'm thankful those are up and already ready to go.
Plexiglas.
That's great news.
What's that, Tom?
Yeah, that's great news. I say that's great news because we're finding out that, that as people reengage in the, you know, getting back to normal, that this fear factor is something we need to overcome. So people aren't afraid to reengage, and I think that those types of things help in that regard. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Anyone else, any further questions?
Yeah, John, Jim?
Yes, Jim?
Yeah, the last couple of weeks, I've heard some people in town concerned that the project on the town common is over budget. And I was wondering if Yanos was on and he could explain exactly what has happened over there, if we're on schedule, and whether or not this is over budget.
Yanos, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Project is on time, is under the budget. It's not over budget at all. Last year, we installed main lines, 15-inch line, and a catch basin, and we graded as close to the finished grade as possible. We had, you know, also seeded, because it's a requirement. We cannot leave the mat hole like this on the construction site. Sometimes you see a construction, big pile of loam, and they are seeding those ones so that we don't have erosion all over the place. Now, for the spring, we left to install underdrain, 6-inch underdrain system, and we graded as close as we could to the finished grade, so we will know where really to install the underdrain system, because the material over there varies so much. It's a lot of glacier tilt, silty material with ledge. So we didn't want to start putting underdrain where it's not necessary really to put it, and then stop blasting ledge and do additional work that will not be necessary. So that gave us a good indication of where to put underdrain. And then this spring, unfortunately, we had quite a few rainy days, so we couldn't start right at the beginning of March, which I was hoping to. And the contractor decided to go with a bigger excavator that's going to go faster, because finally I says, no, we have to start doing the work. We can't wait till, you know, until it starts dry in June. And we were planning to go with a smaller excavator and put those 6-inch line, put the electrical conduit and irrigation system in the spring. Right now, as of today, the underdrain is installed, the electrical conduit with no wires inside, but electrical conduit is done, and a water top is done from the main, from Pillsbury Road. Tomorrow, contractor is going to start installing the irrigation system, and they will continue with the water line to bring to the faucet down in the corner and the back over there, would be like a farmer's faucet over there, so people will have water, because it was decided that it will bring the water. We have activities over there and no water whatsoever. People bring in the bottles and the coolers, and if somebody wants to wash something, people go over there, the water was necessary to, you know, to be in a park like that. So that is still outstanding. So starting tomorrow, and I'm hoping that within, I'm watching, you know, I'm pretty much over there every day going and checking what they are doing. And then hopefully, if the weather will halt this week, we'll be able to put a final seed on it, and that will be pretty much, that part will be done. I still want to do the reconstruction of a crown on Pillsbury Road. Pillsbury Road should never had a pavement shape like it has. For years, somehow, that was way before me. It was super elevated. This is not some kind of curve over there on the highway that needs super elevation. It should be crowned, and the water that is coming down from a parking lot should go on the northern side of the road, not flowing over the road, across and falling down into the common. So I still want to do this part. I always wanted to do that under the, not this particular, but under the road project to improve that drainage over there. That will help quite a bit. Hopefully, that with this catch basins that we have right now, it might take enough water, but I don't want to take any risk of... but I don't want to take any risk of still, you know, flowing towards the common from that parking lots and from the road. So that would be still done. And like I said, project is, it's not over budget and it will be completed very soon.
Thank you, Yanos.
Any questions? Okay, so I'll move to Lisa for Assistant Town Manager's report. Anything to report, Lisa?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to give a quick update. Well, really, it's no update at all. Leadership Londonderry is still on hold. We would have had our graduation this month, but given the fact that we're still obviously not allowed to do any sort of gathering, we're just going to wait and see what transpires over the next month or two and hopefully we can wrap it up at some point over the summer. And then if you'll permit me just a moment to put on my HR director hat, I just wanted to compliment and say how proud we are of all of our employees and hopefully let you know how proud you all should be of your town staff. Of course, our police and fire are frontline heroes as always, but we've got a bunch of folks, really, our entire staff, who's been working behind the scenes nonstop, many of them seven days a week to make sure that everything continues apace, not only with our normal work, but also additional things like helping, you know, set up residence with volunteers to get groceries and serving meals for our seniors and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to put that out there and pay a compliment. We, we see you, we know you're working and we appreciate all that you do.
If I can add also that Public Works Highway Division is always working. They never took time off and nobody, the full staff is working over there. So sewer is flowing and the roads are maintained because everybody forgets about what is underground. Everybody reminds, everybody else is working, but Public Works departments everywhere are working and there's important water is being supplied and sewers flowing.
Thank you. Yes, I did not mean to neglect them, of course. They've definitely been out there, just like our police and fire.
I was going to say we're five months from budget season. Yanos is already priming the pump.
You better put some suntan lotion or some sunscreen on that beach over there where you are. You look pretty orange. You look, on my, on my screen, you look pretty orangey.
So let me, let me go to our chiefs. Chief Hart, anything new to report from the police department?
Bill, you have to unmute.
We, as you may know, we have two, actually five people out right now in quarantine. Two are sick. But both are on the mend. So all's well internally and externally, steady state.
Fantastic. And we'll wrap things up with Chief O'Brien.
Good evening, everyone. As everybody has seen on the news over the last couple of weeks, Channel 9 has been broadcasting the numbers that we have currently in town here. Londonderry is in the top five within the state. We currently sit at 36 cases in town as of today. Those numbers have been steadily increasing over the last week or so. So again, I remind everybody to look at the governor's stay-at-home orders, practice your social distancing when you're going out in public to wear a mask, whether it's a cloth mask or the surgical mask, whether it's a homemade mask, with some type of mask. Recently, as of tomorrow, we're getting nine guys back because we had to put nine guys out on quarantine 14 days ago. And this was a call that was unrelated to the virus whatsoever, but again, we don't know what you're facing when you go out there. We had a motor vehicle accident, a pretty severe motor vehicle accident on the Oprah Pass at exit four. And all the crews practiced proper safety measures, you know, with the gear that they were wearing. But at some point during the extrication, each and every one of them was compromised for a period of time. So I had to put basically a quarter of our operational staff out on quarantine for 14 days. Again, you know, I encourage people that are experiencing symptoms or are quarantined or awaiting test results, again, go to the, go to the town's website, go to the fire department, click on their special forms and fill out that form and get that to me. Other than that, working with the town manager and the police chief and the building department for the new phase that's going on for starting to reopen some of these businesses, so we will work very hard with them to make sure that it's done safely, but allows these people to try and get some clientele back in. That's all I have.
So Chief, I think it's a couple of other things that are, you know, coming about pretty soon. So as these businesses open, I think it's all been agreed to that at the end of the day, you know, the fire chief has the final call. So if, you know, if a restaurant opens up and opens up into the parking lot and the fire chief decides that they need to make some adjustments, it's fire chief's call. Coming into town hall, we have been speaking with our attorney and we will be more than likely, when we go to open, we will be more than likely be requiring masks of people who come into the building and to, you know, bring their own mask. For those of you who didn't see, Governor Baker in Massachusetts has a mandatory mask rule going into effect starting on Wednesday, May 6th. So be aware, if you go to Massachusetts, you need to have a mask. I don't think I missed anything else, but those are just some quick highlights that I've picked up just recently. Anything further from the council or anyone else this evening? Ladies and gentlemen, our next town council meeting is on May 18th. I know this might be a little bit of an aggressive goal and it is only a goal. You know, things are changing, you know, two weeks from now is like a lifetime these days and things are changing quickly. I would like just to at least have a plan to be able to meet live. What I mean by that is, and I discussed this with the fire chief, is, is remove all the chairs from the room and the audience to only, only leave the ones behind that are six feet apart. Be able to put the council and the staff and everyone six feet apart. I don't know if we'll be able to do it by the 18th. It may not be till June till we do it. But that is sort of the plan going forward that when we come back and we can go live, that will probably be the first phase of us going live. So our next meeting is on May 18th at 7:00 PM. Do I have anything further from anyone? With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So who was chairman?
Motion by Counselor Green. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Butler. I, John Farrell, motion, vote to adjourn.
I, Joe Green, vote to adjourn. I, Tom Dolan.
I, Jim Butler.
Motion to adjourn.
I have Deb and Jim. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for this evening. If you weren't able to contact us and you having any issue getting into the comment section of tonight's meeting, please contact Kirby Brown at the Town Manager's Office. Let her know so that we can continue to be, give the best access possible to everyone here in town. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.